You mean I wrecked my dinner for nothing?
We should have just, I literally, we should have canceled this meeting.
Well, we're all here and Kelly Cook's ready to go, so.
Keith, good to see you. Good to see you, sir. It's going to be a very brief meeting because the agenda has been paired from five items to one. Okay, I will open the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the December 17th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to 9:30 PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk Hour for Hearing. After the application is announced by the Chair and read by the Secretary, the applicant will come forward and identify themselves, state his or her name for the record, and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardships requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application will be called. New applications will not normally be heard after 9:30 PM as the Board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting, but should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded and will become a matter of permanent public record. Okay.
We'll have the roll call?
The roll call this evening. Greg Basher.
Here.
Okay. Marilyn?
Here.
Who else is on tonight?
Keith is here.
Oh, Keith, I'm sorry. You're here? Good to see you. Myself and Tammy, who else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. I will tell those that are viewing that the five items to be heard tonight have been pared down to one. I will open each item and then leave them open until next month's meeting. The first item is Marilyn?
83 East Avenue?
You need to give us the number on it.
Oh, sorry. It's 20-1217-01, 83 East Avenue LLC. Variance of required parking previously approved by variance reduced parking from 116 spaces to 103 spaces. Property located at 83 East Avenue.
Okay, I understand that the applicant is requesting a one-month delay on this item?
That's correct. Robert France, attorney for 83 East Avenue.
Okay, so we will leave this item open and you will not have to renotice the neighbors on this.
Thank you.
So we will hold it open until the January meeting. The next item on the agenda, Marilyn?
Item B, 20-1217-02, 26 Stewart Avenue LLC. Special exception to continue non-conforming commercial use of structure and property. Property located at 26 Stewart Avenue.
Is the representative for this project present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Liz Sachi, attorney for the applicant.
Good evening, Ms. Sachi. How are you?
Thank you very well, Mr. Chairman, and you?
Good. I understand that you wish to delay hearing this item until January?
Yes, we would. My clients are in the midst of having discussions with neighbors who have raised some issues and concerns and we believe that a one-month's time will give us a sufficient amount of time to resolve those issues.
Very good. We will leave this item open and hear you on the January agenda.
Thank you. Lee, excuse me, an attorney that represents the neighbor at 28 Stewart asked that I read something into the record. Could I do that briefly?
I don't think it would be appropriate at this time.
Just her request that it also be continued.
Okay, well, then go right ahead.
Okay. So. He says, "My firm represents Victoria Atreclia, the owner of 28 Stewart Avenue, which abuts the property that is the subject of the application above. This is to confirm that we consent to and join in the request submitted earlier today by the applicant's attorney, Elizabeth Sachi, that the public hearing on this matter be postponed or opened then immediately continued to a subsequent meeting of the Board and to clarify that we wish to reserve our right to submit exhibits and be heard at such later meetings. We have not done so in reliance on the expectation that this matter shall be continued."
Very good. Well, that was...
Linda Pesky, and she thanks the Board for...
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
So by agreement, we will hear this item on the January agenda. Okay, Marilyn, item C.
Yes, 20-1217-03, Kathleen B. Conover. Variance of dormer requirements and number of stories from 2 1/2 to 3. Property located at 99 Perry Avenue.
Tammy, are we hearing this issue tonight?
I believe Attorney Sachi is going to ask.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, once again, I'm asking on behalf of Kathleen Conover that this matter be opened and immediately continued to the January meeting when there will be a five-member board present.
Very good. I will continue this item and have it on the agenda for the January meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year with much health and goodwill in 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good holidays. Okay, Marilyn, item D?
Yes, 20-1217-04, Yannis Anastasia Cadonas. Variance of parking requirements to allow parking in front setback. Property located at 154 West Rocks Road.
Okay, the applicant has requested a one-month delay, so this item will appear on the January agenda. So we have opened it and we will leave it open for the next meeting. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, Marilyn, item E?
Yes, 20-1217-05, Kelly Cook. Variance of dormer requirements and front yard setback for extension of non-conforming front porch. Property located at 176 Perry Avenue.
Okay, does the applicant wish to be heard this evening?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the one thing I will say is that we have four sitting board members and it would be required that you get unanimous consent on your item. It is your decision if you want to be heard tonight or be heard in the January meeting.
I am going to take the risk and go ahead tonight.
Okay. So we will move ahead.
So Marilyn, you'll read the staff memo now?
Yes. I will read it. Okay. Subject 201217-05, 176 Perry Avenue. Variance of dormer requirements and front setback 40 feet required, 32.7 feet existing, 28.5 proposed for extension of non-conforming front porch. Section 118-100 and 118-310C in AAA residence zone. Property located at 176 Perry Avenue, District 5, Block 39, Lot 9. The applicant seeks variance of front setback to add front porch. The existing porch is non-conforming and proposal would extend into the front setback approximately four feet further. In addition, applicant seeks variance of the dormer requirements to span the length of the roof at 75%, where 50% is maximum allowed and to align with the existing non-conforming dormers where a two-foot setback is required. Background: The home was originally built in 1832. The applicant has obtained both zoning and building permits for the renovations at the home. However, the existing dormers were connected in the middle without approval. Analysis and findings: The home predate zoning regulations and the current location of the home could be considered a hardship to comply with current setback regulations. The existing dormers were already non-conforming and the middle portion of the dormer, if a variance is granted, would then not have to be removed. So Ms. Cook, if you would come forward?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this. I'm extremely nervous tonight coming here.
Please don't be. We're just homeowners like you.
Well, I'm glad there's only one person going ahead. So I am recently divorced and I bought this house in May. It was on auction and I did not have a chance to get any sort of inspection or anything like that. So I paid cash. I had my settlement from my divorce. I was looking for something that I can settle down in and I bought this house, 1832 farmhouse, that had sat there for two years and all the neighbors, it was overgrown, the house was falling apart. I had been sitting in my own rental, watching HGTV for a couple of months of COVID, thinking that I could do all this myself. And I ran into so many problems and I hired the wrong contractors and I spent so much money that I've now wasted hiring the wrong people. And one of the contractors said, "Yeah, you don't need..." The chimney was falling apart in the center of the home. So that's what prompted us to take the chimney out. It was leaking, it's falling apart. And the contractor at the time said, "You don't need a building permit for that." And I trusted that and I'm new to this. I have a very kind of ex-husband that would handle all these type of things. So here I am, trying to do this on my own. And he went ahead and did it and I didn't know better. And then now trying to get the building permit to continue because peeling back the layers of the house, it has been so much that I found structurally and all the electricity has to be ripped out, plumbing, everything has to be completely redone in this house. So this house that I thought I got a really good deal on is turning out not to be. So the dormers were very oversized in the beginning and now...
It's eight o'clock.
Sorry about that. Sorry, that's my computer. Combining them, all of the neighbors have said, even people, a lot of people walk by there because it's Silvermine and a lot of people walk by and everyone has complimented me, myself pulling weeds and taking bushes out with my hands. And people have said, "It looks so great. Thank you so much for doing this." Because the house sat there. You couldn't see the house from the road. And everyone has said the dormers look so great the way that they are. And the neighbors, I notified all four neighbors, abutting neighbors, and they responded. Tammy has letters, I believe, responded with in favor of the two changes that I'd like to make to the house. The dormers connecting, which looks so much better than the overplized dormers. And then the wraparound porch, because on the house, there's a portion of the house that's on the right side and then the house is very vertical anyway. So then adding the wraparound porch a little bit would kind of balance out the house. That's why I was planning on doing this. Just aesthetically, it just feels like it needs that and it would look more farmhousey for the neighborhood. And the front porch, as it is right now, is falling off. And I can't even lock the door or anything. It has to be rebuilt anyway. So that is my plan. I believe you all have pictures of how it would look and how it looks now. And I mean, whatever you want me to do with it, I will do. I want to make everything right on this property and do everything the way you want me to. But I would really ask, you know, I really prefer to keep the dormers together, but I mean, it's your call. So Tony, what do you want to... Anthony, sorry.
Yes. Hi, board member. My name is Anthony Totillo and I'm working with Kelly. And she actually was very good in which she basically stated everything. When I first got involved with her and the dormers were already connected and we were seeking to separate them because I found out through Amelia that they were obviously it was a mistake on her part. But after working on the project, measuring the house, seeing the picture of this wraparound porch that she had come up with, she has a real sense of design and a good eye. And I said, "You know, I'd be ashamed to really take these dormers apart because I think it looks better with them together." The other thing is obviously the hardship, which you had already conveyed, was that the house is built in the 1830s. It's all post and beam inside. The fact that she had to take out that chimney, that was no small thing in there because it probably was very compromised. But the front dormers were already aligned with the front facade of the house. So nothing in this house conformed, not just from zoning standpoint, but also from a structural, like Kelly was saying, and code issues that she's addressing. So when she's all done with this, it's going to be all brought up to, you know, modern code and specification structurally and everything. And it's unfortunate that it's so close to the road, but that's just where it is. I think this open wraparound porch, which comes out, like she said, about four feet further, you know, the house on the picture is accurate except for the fact that the house is raised up off the street. So it's actually up higher, but it adds a real nice aesthetic where it wraps around the whole house and it's all wide open anyway. It's very New England farmhouse. So I don't know if there's any other specifically technical stuff you need me to convey, but I think she did a great job.
I just also want to say that I've hired a structural engineer as well because we run into structural problems in supporting the house. So all this stuff is blowing my mind. I mean, I think it would have been easier to knock the house down, but I'm trying to keep the history. There were two artists, famous artists, that live in this house back in the 1800s and the 1900s, early 1900s. And I'm just trying to keep the charm of Silvermine and try to bring it back. And it's a bit off way more than I can chew, but I'm just trying to make everything right now.
Okay, I think you've stated your case and I'm sorry to learn that you've had problems with contractors. You should be very aware that anytime you touch a house, talk to the building inspector first. Bill Ireland is a good guy to work with here in Norwalk.
I've been with Leo well. I know Sean Duffy well. I know all those guys very well now. I know now. I've learned so much now.
Have you gotten acquainted with the state building inspector over bringing the house up to current building code?
State building inspector? Who is that?
Well, we have a state building inspector's office and anytime you need to do something that doesn't exactly work with today's building code, you can write an appeal to the state building inspector's office.
Okay.
I happen to be facing that on a project right now in Silvermine and we've taken a very different path on a house that unfortunately will have to come down. It sounds like it's in about the state that your house was in.
Mr. Levy, she hasn't contacted anybody there yet. I think she may have to from a standpoint of the ceiling heights, but that's one of the next steps.
Yeah, Bill Ireland will guide you through that.
Yes, no, that's good information.
I'm working on, the lowest ceiling is six foot six.
Okay, well, we got you beat on that. We're higher than that.
Okay, good.
It's still close though, but that's something, I can help Kelly through that. That's not a problem.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to keep you guys tonight, but the reason why, I have nowhere to live soon. So either way, I just have to get this going. I bought this in May. I thought I would be in by Christmas and I'm in a rental now. So time is of the essence with me.
Okay. Does any other board member have questions of the applicant?
I do not have any questions at all. I've studied it and I think they studied the recommendation of zoning of our commissioner, acting commissioner and act inspector, sorry. I have no questions.
Can someone explain to me, if we don't approve this, I heard something in here about like the dormer has to come down or there's not connected. I don't quite understand what that means.
Yes, Greg, the dormers would have to come down if we don't approve this. Because...
And the contractor cut into the ridge of the house. So the entire roof has to come off and rebuild the dormers the way that they were, the way that I found them, which is oversized, and I just have to put them back to the existing state.
She would have to create two separate dormers and the fact is, the way that this house was constructed and a post and beam and the low ceiling heights, that roof line in the front actually in the middle between the dorm, it goes between into the second floor. So she would have to then, it becomes a big structural issue. You know, and like Kelly said, the guy, that one of her contractors, whoever was the framer, compromised her ridge roof line. And so she's addressing that right now with the structural engineer. So everything is going to be up to speed. And I've also talked to Leo Guerrero at the Building Department about some of this stuff. So he sees that, he's actually glad that I'm in board and we're going to do it right. So she's getting good guidance.
Well, I'll remind the board and the applicant, we have previously approved dormers that sit within the front yard setback. So I don't think we're breaking any new ground by approving the dormers. And we've also approved porches within the front yard setback at our discretion. So unless I hear any negative, well, before I go with that, is there anyone else online that wishes to comment in favor of this application? Hearing none, I will ask if there are...
I'm sorry, Lee, we do have three letters of support.
Okay. Good. I don't think any of us have those. Unless they're lengthy, could you read them into the record?
And Tammy, I have one, right? Gerard Cranston?
If you scroll down, the others should be there.
Oh, and Krieger. Oh, I see. Yes, and Kathleen. Okay, got it. Yeah.
Marilyn, if you would like to read those into the record?
Sure, let me, one is really short. This is from Gerard Cranston. "We recently received notice pertaining to a variance that Ms. Kelly Cook is seeking regarding the construction of a new porch as well as modifications to her, sorry, to her property located at 176 Perry Avenue in Norwalk. These are scheduled to be discussed December 17th, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. Our property located at 4 French Farm Road in Norwalk is adjacent to Ms. Cook's property. We are encouraged by the effort that Ms. Cook is putting into improving her property and fully support her receiving a variance for the proposed front porch addition and dormer modifications." There is then one from an Anne Krieger. It's a little lengthier. "I live at 174 Perry Avenue. We are but 176 Perry Avenue directly to the south. My husband Peter and I wanted to let you know that we believe the new dormer as rebuilt by Kelly is an improvement over the previous individual disproportionate dormers Kelly inherited when she bought the house. We feel the current configuration is more attractive than the previous double dormers. It would be a shame and waste of money to require the dormers revert to what they were. We also feel the proposed front porch design will further enhance the facade of the house and break up the vertical line with the added roof line of the porch. The porch with standing seam metal roof will add to the farmhouse aesthetic, true to our neighborhood. This home was bank-owned and neglected for many years before Kelly purchased the property. We appreciate what Kelly is doing to restore the home and help preserve and enhance neighborhood values. I have been a Realtor with Sotheby's in New Canaan for 18 years. I have firsthand experience with the positive impact such a renovation can have on surrounding homes. The Silvermine area is indeed special. Kelly's work is in keeping with the vibe. As immediate neighbors to the south, we appreciate Kelly's concern for proper drainage from the raised elevation of her backyard surrounding the newly installed pool. We appreciate Kelly's continued effort to assure we are not adversely impacted from stormwater runoff due to these rate changes." And then there is another one from Kathleen. The Penn Field.
The Penn Field, yes.
Short, pretty short. "We have been advised by a legal notice of Ms. Kelly Cook's intention to add a front porch along with keeping the dormers of the existing structure house located at 176 Perry Avenue. We are adjacent neighbors of Ms. Cook and are located at 2 French Farm Road in Norwalk. We feel these addition..." We feel these additions/ improvements will enhance the look of the house and thus improve the surrounding area in Silvermine, which could result in an overall increase in property value. Therefore, we fully agree with combining the dormers and wraparound porch as proposed. Sincerely, Kathleen Russell and Ralph DePant Felix."
Okay, Marilyn, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any member of the board have further questions or comments to the applicant?
Lee, I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is four to zero. We have approved this item. And Ms. Cook, I'd like to welcome you to Silvermine. I have been a 32-year resident of Silvermine in two different houses. It's a great area to live, and you'll find you have great neighbors.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I took a risk. You guys helped me. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. I'll buy you all over as soon as it's done.
Okay. Anyway, we'll move on to the next portion of this hearing. We've already approved the only item on the agenda. So I will ask if anybody has any comments on the minutes that we received for the last meeting.
None for me.
I was not there, so I have no comments. It wouldn't be relevant.
No, thank you, Keith. Tammy, I do have a major comment on the minutes.
Okay.
My name was spelled wrong 26 times. That is a new record.
Which name, Lee or Levy? Because that would really...
Levy. It's L-E-V-E-Y.
We'll get that fixed, Lee.
If it were L-E-V-Y, that would be Levy, and I don't drive my Chevy down to the Levy.
I would laugh if it was Lee that was misspelled 26 times.
Well, I will tell you honestly, there are six people within a half-mile each direction of my house, all named Lee. And I'm the only one. No, there are two of us that spell it L-E-E.
Really?
Yes.
How does anyone else spell Lee?
L-E-I-G-H. That's the female spelling.
Also, I think the Irish spelling.
Yes. Anyway, so if we can see some corrections on that, we might be able to approve them at our next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Before we sign off, I'd like to wish everybody on the board and staff Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, be healthy.
So I did put, thank you very much, I did put the next year's schedule on.
Yes.
I didn't know if we should vote on that, or...
Thank you for bringing it up. I have no issue. You know, I don't know how much traveling for business or pleasure any of us are going to be doing, you know, for at least the first half of the year, but I have no issue with any of the dates proposed for the ZBA hearing.
Do we have to motion and approve, or?
No.
No, okay.
No. Staff usually sets the meeting dates.
That wasn't...
And, you know, it was just good to see it early. So I'm good to go, and unless anybody else has some major comments, I think we can go with the schedule you've set up for us. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting.
I will second that.
Thank you, Greg. Aye.
Bye-bye, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye.